This work session of the Board of Education is now called to order. Please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Want to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. We'll get started by approving our agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda as printed?
I don't have anything for you.
Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion please to approve the agenda?
President Van Antwerp, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as printed.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Thank you. So if there's anyone in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed. The motion passes and we'll proceed with our agenda, which means we go right to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, sir. We have two scheduled reports today. The first one is a bond project update. Now I'll call Mr. Edwards up and have him begin the presentation.
Good evening, President Van Antwerp and Superintendent Belang, as well as the members of the Board of Education for the Porters Public Schools. I'm joined tonight by hopefully some familiar faces by now. Doug Milburn. Milburn is one of the project assistants from Tower Pinkster. To my left here is Mike Gallivan, the other project manager for the project. And Justin Dipple is from Fielding International, one of the architects for Central Elementary in Havrehill. Tonight's purpose is to talk a little bit about the exterior look and the feel of the schools. This is about the direction we're headed, not necessarily the final products. Behind you are a couple enlarged photos of some of the photos that you should have in your packet. And we'll go through those slides together. And there'll be an opportunity for you to take a look and feel at some of the brick and product materials. I'll do a high-level overview of the design, just to get us started. And then Justin will come over and talk a little bit more about some of the details. You're welcome to pause and ask us questions as we go along. Backwards is forward. There it is. Thank you. Just a reminder of our eight guiding principles. And this is a portion that was in place in the previous bond. We try our best to continue to look at each of these guiding principles as we're going along the work. One of the guiding principles that you will see obviously is our guiding principle related to making sure our buildings are reflective of their communities. Particularly number six, develop plans that promote equitable education opportunities while recognizing and respecting our neighborhoods. So we want our buildings to be a complement to the neighborhoods in which they reside upon. First, we'll talk a little bit about Central L's design. This is your top view of Central Elementary School. Its new site is in white. The main entrance to the building faces east. Just over the top of the parking lot is an overlay of the existing building. So the existing building, its main entrance faces north. So with our design, you'll see that the main entrance faces east. Our design statement?
Perfect. Thank you, Jen. So as Jenny was highlighting, the guiding principles, that's what really sets the foundation for the educational vision for the school. When we think about design statements or messages that we can refer back to in terms of what's going to guide the design, both the interior and exterior of the school, we started with these design statements. I invite you to read this. You know, the board members, you have this in its whole capacity to read at your leisure. But for Central L, the main emphasis is really on connecting with community. Knowing that we want to maintain the feel of the campus. We want to augment the middle school, the high school, you know, place a new elementary school that's going to support the vernacular, the look and feel of the current campus. So through that lens, we've come up with some what we call design concepts, right? So one is this idea of focusing skyward. And you'll see that through some of the color palette, in the renderings, the blue tones, some ways we can bring color, texture, tone to the exterior of the design. The idea of soft, light tones, right, colors that are again going to blend with the existing middle school. They're not going to be, you know, obtrusive. But also build on this idea of this playful and organic type forms, right? These are schools for learning, places for joy, for students to come together and celebrate their learning together. So using that playful exploration, there are some concepts that we're going to start exploring on the interior design as well, and how the exterior and interior communicate with one another. In terms of the program, each of the schools has what we call the school heart. Now this is, both in a physical and metaphorical way, the center of the school. This is the place where everybody comes together for large gatherings, the place that kind of identifies each school in its own unique way and character that really resonates with the staff, students, and community at large. And so when we talk about learning communities, and we'll get more into this in the future with the team, but knowing that we want the exterior to support these statements. So the key idea here is the idea of a central park, using that heart space, you know, and that inviting, welcoming entry to really practice that. The idea of neighborhood parks, right, knowing that we want to design spaces and the scale of even the exterior to be warm, welcoming, and inviting. So those are just some of the, you know, the ideas and concepts that the design team has been exploring throughout the process. In terms of, you know, kind of a visual reference, these are some concepts that we started to begin with. The idea of focusing or this emphasis of skyward, right? So you start seeing these blue tones on the boards behind you and then when we get to the larger scale renderings. But bringing in those soft, natural tones, biophilic colors, right? We don't want to place emphasis on colors that are too bold, too striking. You know, we want the building to blend with its surrounding context. So soft, connected, and community-focused. So we spent some time as a team, basically looking at the surrounding context, actually taking photos, looking at middle school, the high school, everything from the brick tones to the detailing, to even the color palette. And we want to be respectful of our neighbors. We want this to fit in with the current context. So we went through a series of studies and iterations of just testing these materials and exploring what's possible. And we kept arriving to the natural brick tones, very similar in color and tone and texture to the middle school, high school. Bringing in some of those more sandy or neutral colors, which you'll see in a bit here as well. And then really emphasizing, again, this kind of blue, organic texture that kind of blends in with the sky and also creates a little bit of a motif to also celebrate what's different on the inside. You know, so we want the interior and exterior of these colors to communicate. So Jenny shared the site previously. This is what we call like kind of an exonometric, just giving you a sense of how the building, the exterior map starts to take shape. So we're looking kind of south, southwest in this view. The main entrance, again, that east-facing entrance with a parent drop-off and separate bus loop. This kind of more organic, playful type entrance as you come into the school. Some more softer, organic shapes, a little bit of playful language there. And then you see, kind of at the bottom, we have the Auburn brick tones and then some of those sandier colored brick tones that we're starting to use as the base. And elevating some of those bluer tones for, again, that skyward, that emphasis in bringing in more of that natural color palette. And we have some physical samples in a second. We'll kind of bring it to the team here, so you can actually get a sense of the actual feel, the color, the texture that we're talking about. So looking at the main entrance, if you were to basically drive by car or through, you know, pedestrian networks as well, we want this to be a walkable, very inviting, easily, you know, space access for pedestrians as well. And clearly identifying the main entrance in that more Auburn brick tone, again, that playful canopy elements for inclement weather. And then starting to play with, you know, again, that break between the sandy-colored brick tones and the blue upper banding. And as you come into that main entrance, again, thinking about ways that we can elicit joy, have fun, inviting, you see some ideas that we're exploring, kind of at this front, central park idea of spaces where students can kind of come in and congregate before school and then work their way into their learning environments. So in terms of the material palette, most of these materials are very familiar to the campus, to the district. We have some physical samples that the team is going to share. But really pulling off of, again, those red and Auburn brick tones, some of the gray, kind of that sandy-colored allure. Looking at small amounts of wood tone, you know, to soften some of those entrances, playing with that idea of this blue, what we would call it, it's a fiber cement product. So these are products that are very versatile, little to no maintenance, similar to facilities. So again, not introducing anything that's, you know, brand new or foreign to different facilities. And also working with products that, basically, this fiber cement is a system that we can add different patterns to add some interest in individual play to the exterior.
All of the materials you see are samples. These are not necessarily the finished product, more or less the things that we're considering and the direction we're heading. Justin, if you don't mind explaining the difference in those particular documents, I mean, those materials, just that, Dr. Shelton.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Explain, they're the same color, but they're different.
Yeah, so these are probably pretty recognizable as brick. Now, obviously, this is just a sample, so not all the material thicknesses are, you know, are the actual product. But again, you know, pulling those brick colors and tones from the middle school. This is that upper band in the blue that we're showing. This is what's called a fiber cement product.
So that's the material, but this is the color?
Absolutely, yes. Exactly. Yep. Yeah, so this is just a color swatch. And these would be fully integrally colored as well, right? So, and these are versatile, extremely versatile product, at a very decent price point as well.
And this goes where? Is this the product?
Yep. So we do have some tones. We were looking at a couple products as well, in terms of exploring, in terms of where we have glass at the exterior of the building, right? Knowing that we don't want full transparency in all spaces. So we may have some infill product as well.
Don't let it rush you. So if you have a question about any of that, you will see similar products for Havrehill as well. We'll explain them. Havrehill's site is obviously a little different than Central Elementary. Again, based on the logistics of that location. What you'll see in terms of this overhead shot, you will see the existing Havrehill to the west or to your left, and that's outlined. And to your right, in white, you'll see the school. The school's entrance still faces in the western direction. What you'll see more north would be the parent drop-off as well as parking. And more south, you'll see staff parking and the like. And again, these are just the concepts as we're still working through them. But this is how the school sits on its existing campus.
Okay, so in terms of Havrehill, we have a slightly different design statement, you know, for this project, noting that every site, every community is unique in its own right. So Havrehill is different in the sense that it kind of is nestled into this little pocket of natural vegetation. So we started to, as a design team, think about, okay, what's really unique about that, right? Central being this kind of jewel within the park. Havrehill has a little bit more of this, you know, blending with nature. So we started with the idea of biophilic design, right? Using colors, tones, textures, that this can really blend in with that backdrop. And then also thinking about the exploration of how that might change throughout the seasons, right? From, you know, summer months, green foliage, to the fall transition, this time of year, you know, driving and seeing that color change, how beautiful that is. So building on the idea of soft, earthy tones, playing with light, shadow, texture, and also colors, weight finding, are some things that we started to really explore. In terms of, so the heart at Havrehill, similar in the same context of that community-centric space that supports staff, student, community engagement throughout, you know, day-to-day learning, but also that can bring the community together. So we're working with some preliminary concepts. One, you'll see this treehouse concept, how the learning communities can kind of take this similar motif to pulling inspiration from nature. So visually, what that might look like, we talked a little bit about this idea of a treehouse, right? You know, how that can elicit fun in a figure, in a metaphorical way. Not necessarily the figurative way, we're not building a treehouse. But just the idea that these are places for learning and joy. So how can we pull from that to really elicit that response and create a, you know, still a fun, warm environment for students? We talked a lot about foliage and again, that tree backdrop, pulling colors from that texture, light and shadow. You started seeing some introduction of more of these orange or Auburn or Ford tones. And again, you know, this is still a place for community. It's just different in the sense of walkability and how you access the Havrehill site. Obviously Havrehill Park to the north, you know, a little bit more sprawled out in terms of that access. So similar to Central, we did some investigation of the existing school, looking at what's with the current materials, the surrounding neighborhoods, the low-density housing to the south. So strategically looking at colors, materials, palettes, design language that are being respectful to all neighbors. We started moving towards a little bit more of the Auburn or these earthy, kind of, you know, fall over tones. And what that might look like. Okay. So here's an aerial view of the current design direction for Havrehill. So we're kind of looking to the north here. So the new building that you kind of see silhouette in white there, the main entrance facing to the west with parent drop-off and parking kind of on the north, northwest. The south would be more so for staff parking and outdoor play, kind of to the southwest there. Looking at the northeast and east of more of this outdoor learning and exploration-type spaces and how we can use materials to support that. So here's, you know, driving up from the west or walking up to the main entrance, looking at the, you know, using the signage to kind of bring down the scale a little bit, the idea of a canopy to help, you know, welcome visitors and staff and students to the building. Looking at, again, the same palette of materials, just a slightly different color tone. So in terms of the brick, in terms of the fiber cement panel, looking at a slightly different use to support, again, those design statements and the character of Havrehill's site. As you come into that main entrance, the library is the space, kind of that two-story space just to the left of the main entrance, the avenue is up right there. So at both schools, be very intentional about sightlines and access points to control, visible sightlines for the receptions that have an entrance that have to have clear observation. As we move a little bit further to the main entrance, bringing in some wood tones to that canopy to create this kind of, this tree-like motif or this really warm and inviting entrance space. This is the south side of the school. So this would face kind of a low-density neighbors along the south there. And intentionally working with the massing of the material, it will be a little bit more subdued and respectful to the neighbors on the south. As we move to the north side of the school, of the campus, this is where the core learning wings are strategically placed. So this is the spot on the north side of introducing a little bit more color, a little bit more texture, knowing that this is a space for outdoor student learning and exploration. And here's just a sample of the materials that we're exploring.
As those materials are coming around, I also want to share with the board that for both staffs, at schools, at both schools, we've taken these visuals that you have seen, particularly the poster boards. We brought samples of the products for both staff. And overwhelmingly, they liked the direction we were headed with the look and feel of their building. And we had a number of staff members come through at both sites, touch and feel, ask questions. And I want to say, at least both schools, we probably were there at least 30 minutes or so so that staff had more than enough time to ask questions about the look and feel of the campus. As this concludes our portion of the presentation, we will be happy to answer any questions or go a little deeper if there is anything that we highlighted that you wanted to know a little more information about.
Do board members have any comments on what we've seen so far?
One comment, especially on the Central, because I think to me it has a little bit bolder color statements. Just the longevity of how long those colors will look current. Is there a chance that 20 years from now, they'll look dated? Or fade, yeah. Because in this presentation, I like them.
Sure. Yeah, so I think the first question would be around durability. You know, these are products that, the fiber cement product that we're showing here in the blue is very similar to the maintenance and the longevity of, you know, clay-fired brick, right? So in terms of it fading or dissipating, we're very confident that these types of products will hold up for longevity of time. In terms of, you know, it being timeless, I think is essentially the question. So that was why, in terms of the exploring, you know, the surrounding context, right? Of seeing how much blue in between the middle school, high school environment. I think it responds, you know, very well. So the other thing with this, this is on the north side of the school as well. So when we talk about how light and sun moving throughout the time of day would change the color of those. Havrehill is very similar as well. We're actually using more color on the north side of the building, mainly because that's the place where students are going to break out for their learning. And just knowing that that's typically in shade and shadow, you can use a little bit stronger colors on that side of the building.
I'm not getting colored glass. You may have said something down the road here that I missed. But what would you be using colored glass for?
So the thinking with that right now, again, these are concepts, is using very small amounts in these spaces where we do have, like, let's say, a library space for the entrance. The learning commons, those are spaces where, you know, students can break out from their learning environment to the outdoors, for example. So looking at maybe a few areas of using small amounts of patterned glass or potentially colored glass, just to help, you know, with weight finding, for example.
Okay, so it's an interior finish, it's not a window?
It could, it would be more so.
It could be an interior window, but I'm just thinking, like, on the outside, you're not going to have an orange glass window or?
Correct, yeah, we're not, it would not be stained glass or, you know, anything overly detailed like that, correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
And then the mortars are the same color, I imagine?
For which system?
Well, so you have the blue brick, right? Or is it?
So that system is actually what's called a rainscreen system that actually has open joints. So there's still an insulation behind it, and then there's like a weather barrier. But that system essentially is, it's called a rainscreen because it intentionally allows water behind it. But in terms of, you know, the joints, you would just have small reveals in between those panels. And then in terms of, you know, because similar to, you know, water still, you know, works its way in there and then it just naturally ventilates. It's a very similar system in that regard. But there's essentially no water to those joints.
Anybody else?
No, just as long as it's, like, key's concerned, as long as it stands the test of time.
Well, you certainly did adhere to the guiding principles, particularly number six, as you just pointed out. I mean, they really do fit within the environment in which they're going to be. And, you know, some of our elementary schools from the 60s were just kind of cookie cutter, you know? And this isn't that way at all. I think it's great the way it blends in with the neighborhoods. And I think that, in my opinion, the designs and colors are just striking. I'm not allowed to pick any colors at my house, but they look good to me, I'll tell you that. So this work continues. Is the board comfortable that this work can continue in the vein that it's in right now with us getting, without us getting involved any further with it?
Well, it needs to keep, you know, we're trying to value engineer this stuff. And I did hear you mention that it's fairly economical, the materials you're using, so.
You want to, you can take that.
I can take that one, you're absolutely.
But you had indicated that in your.
Yeah, so we've been working with OAK, our CM as well, to provide strategic input above pricing. Obviously with the market where it's at, you know, there hasn't been predictability about materials being as economical as they used to be. The solutions we're presenting today definitely fit, you know, primarily on the economical side and also using standard colors, you know, product that's very, in terms of constructibility and access to those, you know, we're not looking at custom colors, custom products, and things like that that would add a cost to it. But also knowing that balancing in terms of durability, you know, that's a really key component as well, is knowing that we're not going to put systems and solutions that can be easily damaged and then need repeat maintenance or replacement.
Jenny, unrelated, I'm sorry, unrelated, since we're talking about bricks and everything. Have you noticed the bricks at Central Middle School, there's like some of these white streaks and drips coming down. It's kind of, for a new building, it's kind of unsightly. So if you get a chance, take a look at it.
Okay, I'll take a look at it. I'll take a look.
It's just kind of.
Do you know, is it a particular area?
Ah, you can see it from Westage.
Okay, I'll look.
So if you drive by it, it's just kind of, it's a new building, it's so pretty, like, huh, what happened here? And I don't know bricks, so.
I'll take a look at it, most certainly.
So Jenny, so where do you, where does the process go from here as far as following this? And then maybe the question for the board is, how much more? Do you want to be informed as we go along? Or do you want to have a final say in some of the material selection? You know, I'm just trying to figure out so that we can keep on schedule as well as keep the board informed and making the decisions that they wish to make.
So the first part of your question, we're about halfway into the design development stage right now. And what will happen is we'll get to a point where we can turn all of this information over to OAK and they'll do a design development budget. So we'll talk about budget later in the year, return of the calendar year as well. But more importantly, essentially. But more importantly, essentially every portion of this building we're working on, from interior to exterior to mechanical systems as well. What we wanted to apprise the board of is particularly how the school will fit on its site and how it looks. As we continue to go through engagement sessions and we've gotten feedback from students and staff, now we're going to be working on every element of the school, from the kitchen to the heart or the gathering stair, to the learning communities, to the gym. So we'll be sitting down and working with our staff members who are responsible for those areas, getting feedback and responding to the design. But as we go along, essentially, we're getting more and more into every element of the school. And ideally, at some point, when we feel as though we're done, we want to bring back more to the board. But if there's anything that's important to the board prior to us making a final decision, we're very open and welcome to bringing you back progress updates as we go along. So this is kind of a major step for us to give the architects the okay to keep going in that direction with the color patterns and things of that nature.
It's definitely, the colors are definitely not as radical as our initial presentations, so I'm warming up to them.
That's good, that's good, that's good.
I'll second that.
Well, you know, I think that speaks to the willingness of our architects to not be married to an idea too soon in the process. It's really evolved based on a lot of input from staff, from students, from others that have engaged in the process. So, you know, thank you for your openness to morphing this into something that really works for us. That's the important part here.
And I don't know how many other iterations of this that we haven't shared, that we struck down and said no. But we've gone through a number of different looks and feels of these buildings. And we feel very confident, particularly after the staff had an opportunity to see it, that we were headed in the right direction.
And then just keep solar in mind if you can.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I think of these buildings with air conditioning, and I'm doing it right now. I'm looking at my power bills in the summer, and I love them.
Great, great. No, we still have that in mind. And I don't want to speak too far, but essentially, if there was an opportunity for us, if we chose to do that, that these sites would be, you know, accessible to accommodate that.
Any other comments from board members? So is it accurate that we asked to be informed as they go along the way? But I think we all like the direction you're headed in and appreciate all the work that's been done.
Thank you all. Thank you as well, Mike and Doug and Justin, for their time tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, our second item under the superintendent's report is an update for the board on technology. I think last meeting, there was a request that we give the board an update. So Dan Remas is here to do that, Dan?
Yeah, President Van Antropin, Board Trustees. I am not at all pleased to be here tonight to report to you that we are still having issues with Wi-Fi at Central Middle School and North Middle School. So what I'd like to do tonight is kind of tell you where we're at, what our next steps are, and what we hope to accomplish with those steps. When North Middle School opened, we immediately received reports from staff that the Wi-Fi wasn't working at an acceptable level. And we immediately got to work on troubleshooting, trying to figure out where things were. But that work came to a halt the second we went into our COVID shutdown. The technology team, much like every department in this district, had to drop every project and move to help the district get set up for virtual instruction, which ended up being for quite a long time. As students came back from COVID, this was the same time that we had also brought Central Middle School online, we got identical concerns of wireless from Central Middle School that we were getting from North Middle School. During that timeframe, I brought in three outside engineers to go through all of the systems. One of the engineers even did a complete audit of all of our network systems for the district. All three reported great findings, couldn't find any concerns. You know, like, the comment was, well, it should just be working, I can't see anything, you know, wrong with it. But obviously, it's not. At that point in time, I really wanted to bring in a true wireless radio frequency engineer who really understands the physics of this kind of work. But as of today, I still have not been able to locate the services for someone that is A qualified and B willing to come in and do the work. The board will recall that during this time, I did bring a proposal to you to buy a different kind of wireless system for these middle schools. Board approved that purchase, and we submitted the PO the very next day. Unfortunately, due to supply chain issues, we never received the new equipment, and the order was canceled. But during that time, we also received software updates for not only our Chromebooks, but also the wireless system in general. Made some changes with that, and things started to get better. We came through this summer running all kinds of tests, and I honest to God thought we had it. Students came back, and clearly, we don't have it. So now we're starting to look at different things. Because we were not able to get a specialist in wireless to come on site, we went ahead and bought our own spectrum analyzer. Basically, it's an appliance that listens to all the different signals in the air, so you can try to pinpoint where problems are. We turned this device on at Central Middle School and immediately noticed interference all over the board. It's a very, very noisy building. The best human comparison is trying to have a conversation with someone at fifteen feet in the middle of a Seattle Seahawks football game. You know, you can speak and talk, but you can't, you know, beat the ambient noise. So that led us to a couple of things. We immediately tried to get bit higher power access points to try to fight the noise. We were able to do that. We installed those access points at Central Middle School. We also replaced a significant portion of the Chromebooks with newer models at the middle schools that had better radios in them in an attempt to fight the interference. That made marginal steps, but very marginal. The server stats definitely looked better, but if you ask any of the teachers at Central Middle School, there was no real increase in quality. Which got us to the point of asking ourselves, what's different about these buildings? Why is Central Middle School and North Middle School so different? I had a couple of conversations with the folks that built the building, and we identified right away the biggest change is the LED base lighting system in the building. Central Middle School and North Middle School were the first schools that we brought online with an entirely LED-based system. So we thought, why not? We went in there on a non-school day and powered the system down. And it's not just enough to turn them off, you actually have to power the control systems down to get a baseline read. We saw the interference drop significantly when we did perform that step. But what I can't explain is we've got that same LED lighting system throughout all of Central Middle School and all of North Middle School, and we don't see the interference to the same level in other parts of the building the way we see it in the academic wing. The academic wings, soon as you walk in there, the interference just spikes right off the chart. We also now have the same LED lighting system at West Middle School. We are seeing similar patterns of interference at West, but nothing like the degree of the interference that we're seeing in the academic wings at the two, you know, new middle schools. So I'm still on a quest to find a true RF engineer to come in and take a look at this. I did speak with Plant Moran today, very positive conversation, and they're going to work their network to see if they can find someone to come in and do that. I do have a fourth wireless engineer coming in this week. We're going to start tomorrow night after school at Central Middle School and do a full heat map of the building. What a heat map basically will do is tell us where the worst spots are, where the best spots are, and maybe we can change where some access point locations are to try to get around some of this interference. I've also gotten a small supply of the highest-end access point that's made in the ubiquity line. They call it their enterprise series access point. On paper, it is overkill for what we need. These access points can support up to six hundred clients apiece that are really meant for larger scale venues like arenas or auditoriums. But they do have twice as many radios per access point as a standard access point. And I, you know, like I said, I'm hoping that, you know, we can, whatever we can do to get around this interference is ultimately what we're going to have to do. We are still considering looking at a different Wi-Fi system for these buildings as well. But that's not plug and play. That's ripping a system out and putting a new system in, which will have impacts across the entire district. If we have to do that, we'll certainly do it. But I want to explore these other options for the time being and see what we can't work and figure out. It goes without saying, this has been awful for the teachers, you know? And they're frustrated, and they have every right to be, and the students are frustrated. You know, one thing COVID certainly did to all of us is we really moved into the digital space for education. You know, computers used to be a novelty, then they were a luxury. Now this stuff is essential, it's embedded into everything we do every school day. And it's been incredibly hard for the staff to plan. It's been hard for them to know what's going to work any given day, what's not. The thing that frustrates me the most is that the interference pattern isn't consistent. There are days where we have less interference, days where we have more. Some days, one room can get online, but the room next to them can't. It's just been a bugger of a thing to troubleshoot. In all honesty, I never faced a problem this hard in my professional career. You know, it is mission one for technology. We are drawing resources away from other projects right now to get this solved. We're going to keep working this till we get it, you know? Our students deserve a reliable school, our teachers deserve a reliable school. And if this is what we got to do, we'll do it. So. The other issue that we're working on in the district is getting our surveillance system fully back online. I'm happy to report all the new servers are in and running. I don't think the people in the ad building like all the extra noise that these guys are putting out. But I expect to have the engineers that are doing the programming work on those servers start yet this week. They estimate about ten days to move all of our cameras over to the new servers, considering we've got, you know, almost five hundred of them floating around the district. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Well, as far as LED noise goes, that's got to be kind of an evolving thing in our world. Is there any such thing as a filter that's specific to LED?
That's what I need an RF engineer for. I've been doing a lot of homework, but this is not necessarily my area of speciality. That's kind of part of the process anyway. What I do know is that these lights have something akin to a ballast that you'll have in a fluorescent lighting system. And we think that's where the noise is emanating from, not exactly the lights themselves. Oddly enough, these things don't have to be certified for, by the FCC for not producing radio interference, so not considered a communication device. And so manufacturers can get them voluntarily certified, but they're not required to by law. So, and I think, you know, wireless, quite frankly, or I should say LED lighting is the way of the future. You know, I expect it to be in the remainder of our buildings. You know, the only other thing that's unique about Central Middle School and North Middle School and the academic wings is they are three floors, and the floors are divided by precast concrete. And that precast has a boatload of steel mesh in it. And it's possible the interference is somehow being, you know, magnified or otherwise strengthened by that steel mesh. But again, I'll be honest with the board, this is where I need an outside RF engineer to really look at that. And I'm really hopeful, you know, Plant Moran is obviously very well connected. I'm very hopeful they can get someone for us and get someone for us in short order, because we absolutely need that support.
Are these RF engineers in short supply?
I'm, it's a real specialty field, you know? I'm having a hard time even finding a name. I found a guy out of Detroit last year, and we were all set for him to come over here and do some work, but he goes, made a better offer, a different company, and was gone. So, and that's what we're seeing in the IT world right now a lot. I mean, the players are shifting back and forth. Even Tower Pinksters had some major changes in their technology staffing the last six months with different companies paying more and more to get IT folks in. You know, the market has really kind of switched again. And, you know, right now, we have an open building tech position in one of our buildings, and we don't even have any applicants yet of any measure. So, you know, we're doing all this while being short-staffed as well, for better or for worse.
Any other comments?
Keep at it.
I will keep the board update, obviously. I hope to have some news this, you know, even yet this week on some potential changes, and I'll be sure to let you all know.
Well, you certainly are aware of the burden this puts on our teachers and our students and, you know, the urgency. And we appreciate everything you're doing. And if you need anything from us in terms of resources, I mean, we're ready to help.
The district has been great. The administrative team's been great. Everything that, you know, I've asked to have access to, I've been provided, which is wonderful. The biggest challenge right now is, again, the supply chain. Anytime we want to try to get a part to do something here or there, I feel like we're waiting forever. We still have switches that we ordered over a year ago that are not here yet. And so we've got some areas with some older switches that need to be replaced. Dell keeps telling us that they're coming, but until I actually have a tracking number, I don't believe it, so. I was very thankful that we got the surveillance servers as quickly as we did. That one really surprised me, so. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
You know, I know Dan really takes this to heart, he takes his job seriously. I can't tell you how many times we've talked after hours in the evening on weekends. You know, Dan sharing his frustrations. As I've talked to others, you know, Dan has brought in the people that he needs to bring in to help him diagnose what's going on. So there's certainly not been, these problems don't exist for lack of effort. We're just, we're all stymied by what's going on here, and want to get it resolved just as quickly as possible, so. Thanks, Dan, to you and your team. All right, you ready to move into board education?
Let's do it.
All right, so as, just as a reminder, the Global Hands 1.1 is divided into three reports, high school, middle school, and elementary schools. And each one of those reports is given over a period of three months, starting in October. And then in January, the board approves the entire report. So we're doing the high school portion of Monitoring Report 1.1, and Dr. Pascal was here to present that.
All right, good evening, Superintendent Beilang and trustees. Tonight, I'll be presenting you Monitoring Report 1.1. Make sure I got this clicker down, and I do. You should have a copy of the PowerPoint. You should also have a copy of the monitoring report as well. So I've got some notes down here, I'll take you through the slides and just highlight some of the stuff that's in the report. So what I'd like to do tonight is review the main highlights presented in the first of our three monitoring reports and the key elements. So the first one's focused on high school, like Superintendent Beilang said. That's the college board assessments. This is our second year having Monitoring Report 1 organized by high, middle, and elementary school. And if you remember, we made that recommendation back in 2019 in January, based on the state's adoption of PSAT and SAT as benchmark assessments, and our use of K through five literacy and mathematics assessments. So I'll highlight a number of the data elements from the report, and finally, share some of the next steps that we're taking to ensure that we're responding to the data to improve student learning. Okay, so let's take a look back, though, as we review. 2019 was our last spring testing cycle, pre-pandemic, in which there was state accountability. We had comparable district data reported. And then we experienced spring 2020, and the early stages of COVID, the state of Michigan suspended all of the statewide testing. And we also suspended all of our internal screeners. The testing environment, as you remember, at that point was not conducive for screeners, definitely not appropriate to receive any authentic results. And then the state also had no accountability in terms of participation rate or expected results from any district in Michigan. And then we moved into the 2021 school year. The state was expecting us to assess students using the PSAT and SAT spring assessments. At the high school level, at the same time, we heard from the state that there would be no participation accountability on these assessments. And that would mean that our school report cards would be adjusted based on a lower than normal percentage in terms of participation rate. It also meant that schools throughout the state were not expected to meet that ninety-five percent participation rate of students to be tested. And that meant that our comparable districts, we didn't have the data for them. We didn't know the percentage of the students that were tested in each of those districts. So therefore, we tread it lightly with the 2021 data and applied it very carefully, especially when we talked about changes to instructional strategies or improvements. Now, looking back at last spring, 2022, we're kind of right back to where we were in terms of spring 19, minus the pandemic, of course, with state accountability, scores reported, and school report cards. So just to take you back a little bit, it was a lot, and now we're here. And hopefully, we can move forward in the right way. You've seen this slide before, I believe, when we presented last year. So this is a reminder, when reorganizing MR 1.1 into the high school, middle, and elementary school reports, we're able to present assessments in a slightly different format. So for future years, we'll be utilizing these assessments that you see on the screen, listed in the chart. High school reports specifically, though, are focused on PSAT 8, 9, the PSAT 10, and SAT, as we do receive comparable district information for SAT results only. This table includes the name of the assessment, the topics assessed, you see the grade levels, the level of each assessment under scope, and that indicates. And that indicates where there's comparable district data available on the right. Again, that's something that you've seen in the past, and you can kind of look at that. Just kind of see how we all break that down. All right, let's get into the report. I'd like to go over some of the highlights that are available in the data pages of the report. The first is the graph you see here on page seven in your packet, which is the total SAT average score for our students in spring of 2022. Reminder, this data does not include an alternative high school, so community high would not be included. But in all of the comparator school districts, none of the alternative schools were included as well. So we kind of, we're consistent across the board there. So this, this here, this includes both evidence-based reading and writing as well as math scores combined. So the first few slides that I present tonight will have that combined score of both subjects. So if you take a look at the graph across the horizontal axis, you'll see all of our comparable districts listed. And the state is on that far right. As you move along the horizontal axis from left to right, you're increasing the percent of students that receive free and reduced lunch. And just a reminder, that's how we measure our economically disadvantaged. I know in the past, you guys have liked to have the percentage of economically disadvantaged, although we don't necessarily sometimes include that in the report. But I'm just going to kind of list that off. So if you guys just want to jot that down, maybe in your PowerPoint, under each school district, at least you have it. And as I go through particularly the economically disadvantaged slides throughout the presentation, you'll at least kind of get an idea, the range of the economically disadvantaged and free and reduced lunch in all the comparators, okay? So Hudsonville was at 15%.
15?
15, yeah, 1.5. And then Zeeland, so that we're going left to right, right, lowest to highest. Zeeland was at 19%. And then Huron Valley was 20%. And then Midland Public Schools, 21%. And then here in PPS, we had 21% as well. TC Traverse City, 32%. And then Granville Public Schools was 32%. Grand Blank, 33%. And again, this was the 11th grade cohort for last spring of 2022. So it's important to note that in years past, we typically would be in the lower end of percentage in terms of economically disadvantaged, as you all know on the board. So now we're kind of moving closer to that middle, and it's just something to note. And, you know, maybe that might change from year to year, but just, you know, I'm noticing that trend as, as we're doing these presentations over the last five or six years in particular. So when we look at our 11th grade students who took the SAT spring of 2022, that was 614 students that had valid test scores. We ranked third for total score average for both EBRW, so evidence-based reading and writing and math combined. So you see Hudsonville was first at 1073, Midland second at 1076, and then we're right there, PPS at 1062. And just the range, just so you know, and sometimes you ask for evidence-based reading, writing, and math, the range score is 200 to 800 for both subjects. I know sometimes you, you guys find that a little, that helpful, so I just throw that out there. All right, looking at the SAT evidence-based reading and writing and math total score combined on page seven in your report, we did see some positive results in our students who are economically disadvantaged in their score on the SAT. So in this graph, the vertical axis represents the total score average in which those considered economically disadvantaged in PPS had a score of 971. You see that in the middle. So we had 132 students, 21% of our juniors represent that group. And so that was, that average score of 97, that placed us second among our comparable districts. And we believe this is a point to be celebrated. We're not too far behind the top-ranked district in Hudsonville at 978.
And the score is above the previous page when you said the state of Michigan average was 960. Was that right?
For, for which one?
If you, the page two four.
Oh, 960, 960 is overall score. Yeah, so now we were looking at specifically.
But our economically disadvantaged are still above the overall score. So that's a plus.
A plus, yeah. So continuing to look at, I got to advance my slide. Looking at the SAT total score average for evidence-based reading and writing and math at the bottom of page seven in your report, the circle shows race and ethnicity for, the scores for Black and African-American students. The rectangular, that square, it looks like for us in PPS, they kind of morphed into one. But just know the, the square rectangle represents other than white. And I know you guys have had questions in the past as to what's in that group. Just know that Black and African-American students are also included in the other than white group. I know we've, we've had that question in the past, so just put that out there. The plus symbol represents white students. So just a reminder, and I know you all know this, but due to the low numbers of students assessed in this category, particularly for groups of students, if we don't want to call them subgroups, we do not have data for all comparator districts. So this leads us to having smaller comparator set of information. But you can see how our students performed compared to the state and two other school districts with all three groups. So we had in particular, we had 23 Black African-American students in PPS represented in this data set. So 23 out of that 614 in the junior class. We report it and focus on our Black and African-American students historically because it's a lower-performing group. But I do want to note that not all Black and African-American students are low-performing. You know, we have that conversation a lot of times around groups of students. But the reason why we look at it is because we want all groups to be successful. And we want to see, you know, where kids are struggling and where they may need some additional support. And it's also, you know, a group of students that the state also, you know, holds us accountable to. So looking at our Black and African-American students for spring of 2022, what you see up there, we land higher than the state, which was at 821, compared to our 893 for total average score. And then second to Granville, which was 893 to their 901. And the only other reportable district was Grand Blank at 866. So we don't get a ton of data when it comes to this particular area, but there are some comparables that we can, we can look at. All right, looking specifically at the SAT evidence-based reading and writing, and this will be on page eight in your report, we did see some favorable results. So in this graph, the vertical axis represents the percent of students college-ready, in which we see that 74% of all of our students tested met the, met the benchmark for college readiness in evidence-based reading and writing. So that placed us second among our comparable communities. We tied with Hudsonville there. And we, we definitely believe this is a point to be celebrated. Midland was ranked first, but only by 1% higher at 75%. Also on page eight in your report, we did see some positive results in our students who are economically disadvantaged and their evidence-based reading and writing score on the SAT. Again, the vertical axis represents the percent of students college-ready. So we saw that 55% of our economically disadvantaged students tested met the benchmark in evidence-based reading and writing. Again, that placed us second among our comparable communities. We believe this is also a point to be celebrated. And just a reminder, that was 132 students, so 21% makeup of that junior class in PPS for spring of 2022. And the highest ranked was Zeeland Public Schools at 59%, just for a comparison. Look, so there's a slide there. And again, you guys have it in front of you. Continue to look at SAT EBRW at the bottom of your page, of page eight in your report. So this green oval that shows race and ethnicity for Portage Public Schools for all three groups. Again, when there's a low number of students assessed in any particular group of students, data may not be publicly available, so we can only get what we can pull from my school data. That leads us to having a smaller comparable set, like I mentioned. But you can see how our students compared to the state, which was at 22% for Black and African-American were college-ready in EBRW, 48% for us in Granville, and then 33% for Grand Blank. Again, that was 23 students that represented that data set who took the assessment as juniors last spring. All right, let's move into math. These scores are on page nine in your report. When looking at all students relative to our comparable districts, the percentage of college readiness for PPS was at 47%, which places us tied for third among our comparable communities. 56% being the highest at Hudsonville, and then the lowest being 26%. So you can kind of see that range. Just for comparison, if we look back at 2019, we were third at 59%. So just to give you some context. All right, looking at our economically disadvantaged students on the math SAT, we showed that 27% of our students were deemed college-ready. That puts us in fourth place among our comparable communities. Highest was Hudsonville at 38%, and then the lowest score you saw there is 13%. And again, just for reference, 2019, we were ranked sixth at 30%, just for a reference point. So still not where we want to be, but we're hopeful we can continue to trend in a positive direction. And then for math, looking at our SAT data explicitly for spring of 2020 as aggregated by race and ethnicity, for the reportable numbers, again, we can see that the percent of students that are college-ready in all three groups here on this slide. And again, we can only compare to two other districts and the state in this category. So the state was at 7%, college-ready for Black and African-American. PPS, we were 13% of our 23 Black and African-American students were considered college-ready. And looking back at 2019, we were at 21% for a more fair comparison. So there's no doubt, this is always one where we can do much better, and we'll continue to address gaps and provide supports. And you guys have seen that over the years. Okay, taking a look at the next set of charts in Monitoring Port 1.1 on page 10 in your report, we highlight some of the trend data over the past few years. So you'll be able to reflect on these graphs in the report packet as it allows you to see the changes in trends that have happened from the state and in each of our comparable communities. So in spring of 2022, 74% of our students are college-ready in evidence-based reading and writing compared to 77% back in 2019. So we're typically used to being in the high 70s versus the low 70s over the last four or five years. So we were 78% in 17, 76% in 18. And you could see several districts experienced a dip from spring of 2019, including the state. So you're looking at trend and comparables. Again, we go back to 2019, and that, as that was the last year in which we had full state accountability up until spring of 2022. So just a reminder of that. Our math trend data shown on page 11 does present some challenges for us in some focus areas. So 47% in spring of 2022 compared to 59% back in 2019 for more of an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of accountability. Keeping in mind, we weren't coming out of a pandemic as in 2022. So we always have to be mindful of that. 53% in 17, 51% in 18 for reference in terms of looking at trends. And you could see all of our comparator districts up here have experienced decreases in math scores from 2019 to 2022. Math is definitely an area in which we see the pandemic having a negative impact on learning and achievement. And if Kurt was here, I know he'd have some questions around the math decrease and some of the challenges that we see. Looking at the PSAT results now on page 12 in your packet, we get some new information to add to our monitoring report. Again, we don't get results for comparative schools for these assessments as we only are able to pull them for SAT. So our ninth-grade students stayed consistent in the overall percentage of college readiness in evidence-based reading and writing, 79% in 2019 and 79% in 2022. So that's a good sign, staying consistent there. Tenth graders, however, we saw a little bit of a dip, 78% in 2019 to 75% in 2022 for that more fair comparison. We do know that the number of students assessed on the PSAT in 2021, it fell short of our overall number of students at these respective grade levels. So we had somewhere around 70%, if you guys remember, back in spring of 2021, participating in ninth and 10th grade assessments in that, in that 2021 spring assessment. I just throw that out there because remember that was, there was no accountability in terms of participation rate. And at the, at the SAT level, if you remember, we had almost 86%. But again, we really look at 2021 cautiously. And just getting to the end here, looking at the same PSAT results for math on page 13 in your report, we do have historical information for the PSAT. But again, we do not have that for our comparable districts on these two assessments. Again, we can, Melissa, we can't pull that in our office from my school data. It's just not available. We saw a decrease, though, from 62% in 2019 to 58% in 2022 at ninth grade, and a decrease at 10th from 50 to 48 in terms of college readiness for math. Ninth grade in particular, we're seeing a gradual decrease from 2017 to 2022. And as our 2021 data do not represent 95% or more of our students, so it's hard to include that in our trend data. All right, let's talk about next step. So as you know, we're engaged in our work around continuous improvement. And this data set is included in that work with all of our high school teams. For example, we just held building-level data reviews within the last two weeks. They had this data in their fingertips, as well as our colleagues at the middle school level. We'll be using some of our math and evidence-based reading and writing results with not only English and math teams, but also with science, social studies, and world language. So these results help support our preparation for the school year, also helps us identify students' learning needs and able to strengthen our priority standards and focus in our courses. Our overall academic strategy is unchanged, and that's to continue to improve our tier-one instruction for all students. And tier-one instruction is the instruction that happens in the classroom. We'll be conducting our Fall PSAT and MSQT this Wednesday for all juniors in the district. We typically get those results back somewhere in November. And that will be brought back to the high schools. And we have high school teams that will analyze that data for our current juniors and put together plans with some SAT prep in and outside of the classroom as we move through the school year. And as we do this work, we're cautious to ensure we're responding to the impact of COVID on student learning. We know kids struggled last year, you saw it in behavior, and their ability to, to get on board with some of the academic pieces. So we'll continue to support students from a social, emotional, and mental health standpoint in order to give them the best chance at success within the curriculum and academic performance on high-stakes assessments. And first of all, I just want to say thank you for walking through this presentation with me. I want to thank Melissa O'Keefe in our CIA office. She's the Wizard of Oz behind pulling all this data together for us so we can make sense of it and present it to all of you. She has a great skill set for that, so I really appreciate her. Appreciate all the educators at the secondary level, you know, getting the data that, that we get here in PPS, as well as our elementary colleagues that help, you know, prep kids for the secondary. And thanks to the trustees on the board for listening, your continued support through the pandemic and through our continuous improvement work. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you may have. Anything that I can answer, I'll definitely jot down, bring it back to the team, and get a response to by the end of the week.
Hi, Dr. Pascoe, do you see any differences in buildings, so scores, you know, like maybe math's up in one building and not the other, where you can recognize there might be?
I think if you're looking K through 12, each building is kind of unique.
This is mostly high school, right?
This is all high school.
Yeah, so you don't, so we're seeing some trends here. Is it, is there anything going on at one building that's not going on at the other, or?
I think when we, when we dig into the building data reviews per, per building, I think every year is kind of unique in terms of if you're looking at, you know, Portage Central and Portage Northern. You know, you guys kind of know some, some of the differences in terms of where kids come in to both of those buildings in terms of a, a college readiness level, especially now that we have PSAT. So each building has their challenges, you know, I'm not going to compare the two. They're both unique buildings and, and serve, you know, both makeups of the buildings are a little bit different in terms of some of the challenges and at-risk that they serve and try to support. So, yeah, every year it might be, might be a little different.
Are the trends, you know, the populations are different, but the trends could be.
Yeah, I think that the, one of the biggest concerns is around, around math. You know, you kind of see how we can sustain our evidence-based reading and writing. And kids seem to, regardless even through a pandemic, have kind of sustained their levels, but math is taking a dip. And we see that, you know, Kelly and I talk all the time about what's happening at elementary, what happens from fifth to sixth, and then throughout middle school and then into high school. But math definitely is, is an area where we need to focus a little more, you know, within the district and, and have a little more support for folks that are, are delivering that instruction, so.
Anyone else? Well, Dr. Pascoe, we appreciate the report. It's a lot of information, but it's put together in a way that I think you can understand it very well. We appreciate all the work that went into the report. And in particular, appreciate all the work our teachers are doing to get our kids where they need to be. doing to get our kids where they need to be, so thank you very much.
Awesome, all right, thanks a lot.
Okay, we'll move to our comments and communications section, is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? And while I'm waiting for the list, we'll have our secretary, Dr. Sled Shelton-Harris, read our guidelines for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Public comment at board meetings. The board welcomes community input at our board meetings and recognizes the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. To permit fair and orderly public expression, please conform to these guidelines when addressing the board. Attendees must register their intention to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting by completing the speaker registration form at the beginning of the meeting. Individuals may not register others to speak. Speakers will be recognized by the presiding officer and may not be called in the order in which they have been signed up to speak. Speakers are requested to state their name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. Limit comments to three minutes. Direct all comments to the board and not to us, to staff or to other participants. Speakers may not yield any of their speaking time to others. Provide a written copy of your comments and supporting documentation to the board's secretary if available. Present your comments in a respectful and professional manner to model the behavior expected of student, of Portage students. Refrain from mentioning any student by name, contact the superintendent directly regarding personnel matters. Board of Education meetings are held for the purpose of conducting the business of the school district and are not considered to be community meetings. Board members are not obligated to respond to issues raised during the public, public comment. Normally, such issues are referred to or followed up on by our administrators.
Thank you, Sled. Our first speaker this evening is Rick Grosser, welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, Manantrop and the board, I appreciate your time, thank you very much. My name is Richard Grosser, I live at four-three-two-one Monterey Pine, Portage, Michigan. I am a graduate of nineteen ninety-two, went to Portage Central Elementary, middle school, high school, so any problems with me, you're to blame. Um, you're welcome. First thing, a couple of things I wanted to start off with, a couple of questions to you. We're here for the Bob Knight Field, changing the name from McCamley to Bob Knight Field. We do know that that is, you're expecting a report back in November at some point on that, to have that done. If, we ask if we can be put on the reports, since that is something that maybe we could have a monthly, because I know we go on the, on the, the monthly kickback letter or the report, or the, this thing that goes out monthly to the, to the public.
Rick, we're on schedule, hopefully, to have our policy in place.
Yeah, policy in place.
And that, that will be done publicly right here.
Right, okay, so, um, so we, we would ask, because we, we follow up every, every month, and we would like to, to stay up on that. So, and then the committee that was formed, Belang, you guys had a committee that was formed to come up?
No, we didn't.
We didn't have a committee?
No, a committee was formed, but the board did not form that committee.
Okay, I was under the, that's what we started. So, my next question is, Dr. Freeland in the committee did, they had organized, they put a proposal together and submitted that to you guys. Did you guys get a chance to read that?
We got that in June.
Okay, did everybody get a chance to read that? What was your impression of that? And that's what we were trying to figure out, if the board questions on that and how they felt about that. That's, we're trying to figure out what the board feels about our proposal.
The board was unanimous that Coach Knight is deserving of, of an honor. And we felt that our policy really didn't help us
Yes.
...address issues around taking a name off of, off of a facility, didn't address the process or the criteria for doing that.
Okay, so in November?
And we're working on that now.
Right, on November, so then when we do in November, do you know when a vote or a, after that, we're looking to find out when after?
We have two scheduled meeting dates in November, so.
Okay.
It'll happen at one of those, I, I, we're working towards that end.
Perfect, I guess, and then so our next, I guess our last statement to that is, just, just to keep this in the back of your mind, if it's not Bob Knight, who would we do this for? That's the fairest thing we could all say, so thank you for your time, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, Rick. Our next speaker this evening is Leslie Sherrill. Leslie?
I believe she left.
Our next speaker is Steve Savage, please, welcome.
Superintendent Belang, members of the board, thank you for having me. You may remember when I called in two years ago to complain about this same problem, and you're hopefully reminded of it, when one of our CMS students, B Vogel, stood in front of you two weeks ago. I was very proud of their effort. In the last four years, Portage Public Schools has used taxpayer dollars to build two brand-new middle-school buildings, I believe to the tune of around sixty to seventy million dollars apiece. When the first building, North Middle School, was finished, it was immediately obvious that the internet didn't work, and even though we had this knowledge, we decided to build another building, Central Middle School, the exact same way. And you guessed it, the internet doesn't work. It has been four years since Northern Middle School was completed, four years. It is unbelievable to me that the district would take your taxpayer money and build two buildings a year apart with the same issues, but it happened. And guess what? They're about to build two more. I don't want to spoil the ending, but the internet's not going to work. This is my ninth year in Portage, and since day one, I have been told that I should be moving my curriculum online. I have been denied new books and pushed to use online resources, which I have. The internet is a wondrous place with bountiful treasures to help students learn and succeed, but three years ago, we moved to a building without internet, and we were told there were no solutions, and that we might want to think about getting out that paper and pencil again, even though we had spent countless hours transferring everything to online formats. On occasion, we are placated with fixes that are almost immediately taken away when proven successful. Oh, here are some ethernet cords your students can use. Oh, we actually don't have enough, so we're just going to take them all back. Hey, your TEC station has a hotspot that can support eight students. Actually, please don't use that, stop. Oh, we reset your routers this morning, and internet will work great for a day or two. Oh, well then, let's just reset them every day. Well, no, we can't do that. Well, isn't it just like a little plug or a switch? Yeah, so we could do it. Yeah, but we're not going to. We even created a new internet connection called PPS Isolated. It was incredibly well, it worked incredibly well and basically solved the problem, and at the end of the year, they took it away without a backup plan. I'm not here to cast blame or get someone fired. I'm not here to make the district look bad. I am simply asking for us to be heard, I am asking for us to be seen, I'm asking for someone to care that for four years, we have been dealing with this situation. For four years, we've been telling eleven, twelve, and thirteen-year-old kids that they don't matter enough to fix a problem. Students in the most awkward time of their lives go to school and are reminded that they are not important, and they feel that, they talk about it, I assure you. We, as teachers, will continue to do our job because that is what teachers do. We will make the district, we will, we make the people above us look good, and we help the district keep a stellar reputation. But I don't feel stellar right now, and nobody that is involved with this project should either.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate you bringing your perspective as a teacher and someone who's trying to work through these issues.
Oh, yes, that's a little school, I teach there, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Emily Bybee. Did I get that correct?
You actually did.
Thank you.
Congratulations, no, everyone struggles with that. Okay. Good evening, board, my name is Emily Bybee, and I'm a parent of three kids currently attending PPS schools. As the upcoming elections have been drawing close, I, along with a group of dedicated Portage Public School parents, became aware of the fact that there was no public forum for candidates running for the school board to interface with the community, to share their vision and answer questions of import, of import from the citizens who they would serve. The school board wield a tremendous amount of power in our community, and it is unbelievable that a forum of that sort doesn't already exist. With that in mind, we dedicated a lot of time and personal resources as we set out to create an event that would serve these purposes. We reached out to all PPS teachers, staff, and select students to solicit their input and questions, and many were very excited and grateful for the opportunity to have their voices heard. The event was scheduled to take place tomorrow evening, but unfortunately, due to an unforeseen scheduling conflict, the candidate forum had to be canceled. All school board candidates were invited to attend, and we are appreciative to have three of the seven candidates accept our invitation. Some of the questions that were submitted ahead of time and that all of you should consider are the following. Why do you believe you can improve the lives of students? How do you plan on listening to students? And this next one was kind of long, but it's also very relevant. There is a consistent economic divide between the lines drawn for Portage Northern and Central, more higher-income householders at Central versus Northern, which is very visible across inconsistencies in programs like drama and sports. For example, Portage Northern Women's Swim Team has fourteen swimmers compared to Central having about forty. This has been the case every single year. Why? Because more income allows more kids to do club sports, which improves their ability to be successful in high school sports, and in this case, Central is against combining teams with Northern because it would make them a D-one school. This is so disappointing for those fourteen girls who know, who no matter what they do can't come close to competing at the same caliber as Central. And then the next question was, I would like to ask the candidates if you would consider changing the lines in Portage to be more evenly economically matched, and if you are opposed to changing the lines, how would you propose ensuring both schools have even resources and opportunities? There were various questions that were sent in, and that's just a sampling. Moving forward beyond the selection cycle, I would encourage you all to take your commitment to our community to the next level and create an opportunity to meet and interact with the citizens of our city outside of these formal meetings, especially the various stakeholders who are intimately connected with the decisions you make, parents and caregivers, students, faculty and staff, not to mention the taxpayers, who are quite literally funding the future of our city through their tax dollars. Regardless of political affiliation, we want all voters to be informed when they step into the ballot box or fill out their absentee ballot, and without access to the school board candidates, that is simply impossible. Please do what you can so that you can remedy this egregious oversight.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, are there any comments from board trustees this evening? Okay, I just have one thing. Michelle has asked us to be available at five fifteen before our next board meeting on October twenty-fourth to participate in a communications workshop with the consultant she's hired to work and improve on our communications as a district, so you'll be seeing more communication on that.
Did you say the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, five fifteen to six fifteen before our meeting, yes. Anything else from trustees? Okay, then move to the consent agenda on page twenty-two, please, and consent agenda's pretty simple, it's just the approval of our minutes from the September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, policy governance retreat, and our regular business meeting minutes. Are there any exceptions to the minutes as depicted here? Hearing nothing, the minutes from September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, both meetings are approved. We'll move to our next section of the meeting, assurance of district performance, this is how the board monitors the performance of the district, and we'll start with monitoring report two-point-one on page thirty-one, treatment of consumers, is there a motion,
President Manantrop, I moved that the Board of Education accept monitoring report two-point-one, treatment of consumers as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance with powers.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Very good, Mark?
Yeah, hopefully you had a chance to, to take a look at the reports that were provided to you. Just a few things I wanted to kind of remind the board of and bring to your attention again is that we've been doing these surveys of parents and students as part of our reporting on this particular policy, and during the two thousand and twenty-one school year, we made the decision to put those two surveys on hold because of the emerging needs of the COVID pandemic, so instead during that time, we, we conducted pulse-check surveys, and we received feedback through those thirty and ninety-day surveys that helped us with, gave us more timely information about how we were doing and implementing our plan and meeting student and family needs. And then we resumed our traditional parent satisfaction and student engagement surveys this past spring. So, I did update the charts that I typically provide on these two reports, making note of the fact that during two thousand and twenty-one, we did not conduct surveys. This information is, as we do with all surveys, the results were shared with building-level leaders, they get results back based on their building, have a chance to roll out the results and then develop action plans for how to move those, those results forward. I guess we're looking at the spring of two thousand and twenty-two results to reestablish some new baselines, that's where the, the goal-setting will take place from those, from those results, and you'll note that on both the, the parents and the student surveys, that participation rates were down quite a bit. You know, parents from just about in half from when we originally started the surveys, and then student participation was down as well by about the same number, so, or percentage anyway. So, obviously, we have to work at getting our participation rates back up to where they were. Studer Group points out that it's important that these drops in overall means are largely influenced by the differences in participation rates across the district administration, so one of the things we were hearing from others is this whole concept of, of survey fatigue. I don't know if any of you experienced it, but it seemed like everywhere I went, when I got, by the time I got home from buying something, I got a survey, so I, and plus, we did with the pulse-check surveys, we did a few other surveys that weren't related to, to this work, so we were surveying folks a lot, and we attribute some of that, but nevertheless, we had a couple of buildings that were close in our response to what we had been used to getting, so we're learning from what strategies they use in particular for surveying their students to get those rates back up, so I just point that out. Even though we did see a downwards trend in our results, we still remain above the four-point-oh mark on a five-point scale, so that is encouraging news, but not nearly where we want to be with those results. So, that was one area I just wanted to, to share with you. And then the second, secondly, during this past school year, we reviewed and revised our district standards of service excellence. I've listed what those are, in case you don't recall those, on page forty-one of the agenda is our standards of service excellence, this is how we want to provide service to one another and to our, our consumers, is provide service with respect, to own the interaction, to act with integrity, to communicate clearly, and then lastly, to be part of the team. So, that is, those were revised by staff this past year, and, and, and serve as the standards that we want to provide service to our community and to one another, so the rest of the report remains relatively unchanged from that what you've heard before. That's all I have for this one.
I know, but people are still turning.
Okay, all right.
Here's some thinking, woman. Any comments from anyone? Well, all this, you know, say, treatment of consumers, you can always treat consumers as well you can, you're never, not always going to get a hundred percent satisfaction, because you can't, we can't please everybody all the time. I know you, I know we try, you know, there's a lot of diversity, and you try to, try to take care of everybody, but I understand it's a, quite a challenging task. So, even if scores dip, sometimes things could, there could be something going on that, sometimes doing the right thing isn't make everybody happy.
Is there a plan on, in terms of reaching more people or getting more of a response, maybe is the better question?
Yeah, what we find is that the, the participation rates, whether it's for students or for parents in this case, really depends on what happens at the building level.
Okay. Okay.
And the relationships that exist in this district are based on between the parents and the buildings where their kids go to school. So those schools that have developed strategies to better engage their parents or students in the survey process are, get higher participation rates. So that was one of the things we talked about last spring as we look forward to this year. And we'll again be revisiting that during our LDI sessions that we had this year as to how we can take a look at best practices in these schools and replicate those at the other buildings so that we can get, increase our participation rates. So.
And would the demographic of buildings, I would assume, would have some effect on that as well? Maybe that's an incorrect assumption.
We don't have a way of measuring that because these are anonymous surveys. So we really don't know who's participating, who's not. Just, you know, we know the higher the participation rates, the, you know, the better the, the information that we get coming back. And this is a trend, by the way, that other districts who use Studer as their continuous improvement, further continuous improvement, have found as well that across the country, participation rates went down. And as you know, it's been a little bit of a contentious time, this, these last couple of years. So that contributes to this as well.
I'm just wondering if the demographic of the particular building in general versus the response rate to the survey might tell you something.
Just looking at pre-COVID days, not really.
No, okay.
It really depended on the strategies that were used in that particular building, how many reminders we sent out, how we follow up with, with, with talking about what actions took place in that particular building. All those things helped contribute to it. And so it's, it really, we didn't notice a huge difference when we were at higher numbers.
You mentioned survey fatigue. Are we, are we requesting or sending out that many surveys?
During COVID, I think it was perceived that we were because we were, you know, we were looking for feedback on any number of issues that we were facing. But it's not just the surveys we're sending out. I think it's just in general, when I mentioned that, it's just people are getting a lot of surveys on their, on their technology at home.
So our job is to make ours appear to be significantly important over some of the others.
Yeah, it's, a lot of it has to do with the messaging.
Yeah.
You know, we moved these to, to the spring of the year when we were told it would be more beneficial. For, for, in parents and students both, they had more of the school year under their belt to where they had a better sense of what was happening in hopes that that would increase participation. We used to do these surveys twice a year. We're cutting it back to one. And so we're looking at all kinds of strategies to increase involvement.
Anything else from Mark?
Mark, we appreciate the report. It's important stuff. Appreciate the data. And all those in favor of approving monitoring report 2.1, treatment of consumers, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the monitoring report is approved. Our next monitoring report is 2.5, financial condition and activities, on page 44. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. President, I offer the following motion that the Board of Education accept monitoring report 2.5, financial conditions and activities as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance with policy.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you very much. Mark?
So this, again, is a annual report that you get on financial condition. It's, this report combined with what you'll hear during the district audit make up this, this particular report. And this one primarily talks about the fund balance not falling below 7%. And so what's been updated this year in the report is where we stand over the last couple of years. We don't have a, at the time this report was put together, we don't have yet the 2022 audit. So this reflects leading, things leading up to that. Our fund balance remains well above 7%, and that's primarily due to a greater influx of federal funds, one-time, one-time funds that, in some cases, the district is, is, is taking a longer time to expand because we don't want to, we don't want to spend some of those district funds in, in ways that don't benefit the district. We want to stretch those dollars as long as we can. So what you're seeing here with the roughly 13.5% estimate for, for this year is, is that, it reflects, in, in large part, the increase that we've had with those one-time funds. So that's one thing I'd point out. The other, I know that the board requires that all contractual commitments for equipment, goods, or service in excess of $100,000 come before the board for approval. Most of the actions on that came from bond funds, where we issued contracts for a lot of technology, storage barns at the Northern Campus, some switches, desktop computers, some auditorium refresh issues, and then surveillance server replacements. So those were all through bond funds. And then under the general fund were primarily our contract for custodial services, phone service, and then also purchasing some technology through the general fund as well. So those, that part is listed on page 50 of your report. And then lastly, all of the administrator contracts come before the board. This last batch came to the board on June 30th, excuse me, June 27th, at the regular meeting, and follow, again, the board's guidelines that no changes or adjustments to salary or any other kind of benefits be made without board approval. That group excluded two administrators who were hired outside of that, that bundle of reports, and that was the assistant high school principal at Central High School and the dean of students position at Community High School. So there, the other elements of that report pretty much remain unchanged. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from Mark? I think it appears that the district is in compliance with the monitoring report. With that said, all those in favor of approving monitoring report 2.5, financial condition activities, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the monitoring report is approved. And now we're going to go to our last monitoring report, conflict of interest. Is there a motion, please, on page 55?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make the motion, Board of Education accept monitoring report 2.8, conflict of interest as a reasonable interpretation and evidence of compliance with policy.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark.
This is a rather brief report that really speaks to the issues of conflict of interest. And just my assurances that I'm not aware of any violations that have occurred either on my part or anyone on, on staff. We do have policies in our operations manual that address both our, while our administrative, our professional, and our support staff conflict of interest. And I'm not aware of any that have violated this particular policy. So again, this policy report is very similar to what you've seen in the past. No changes in interpretation or the reports. Answer questions if you have them.
Okay. All those in favor of approving monitoring report 2.8, conflict of interest, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, the monitoring report is approved. And we'll now move to our five discussion items. The first one is to approve the Northern AEF parking lot addition.
Mr. Edwards will facilitate these, these recommendations and discussions.
All right. Thank you again. Joined tonight, Dan Rathburn, who's the senior project manager at OAK, our CM, who's been our CM for the last project as well as this project. My first recommendation is related to the Northern AEF parking lot addition. And I did bring a few slides just to go along with this particular recommendation as well. But I recommend that the Board of Education approve $595,329 for a parking lot at Northern Athletic Events Facility. The total requested amount will come from the building site and sinking fund. The additional improvement was identified by the 2019 Bond Steering Committee as a high priority enhancement project. The parking lot would add 67 parking spaces to the Northern Athletic Event Facility. The current softball parking lot is small, and spectators often park on the street. The new parking lot will help alleviate the need for spectators to park on the street. Also, spectators who attend events at the multipurpose field often park near the doghouse and have to walk to the multipurpose field. The new parking lot is a lot closer to the multipurpose field. Our goal is to have this project completed during the summer of 2023. There will be no interruption to the spring athletic season. Just for a reference point, let's turn it on. There we go. Just for a reference point, this is just a Google image of the current area that we're proposing for the new parking structure. And this is just a graphic that shows how it would look. And essentially, this would add 67 spaces to the, to that area that is currently vacant like that. Okay? The bid summary sheet has been completed. Dan and OAK led that force. And Dan and I would be happy to ask, answer any questions from the board related to this particular project.
Certainly is a project that should be done.
If there are no other questions, I would move to the curtain wall, but I'll pause just to make sure. For the second recommendation for the board, this is related to, um... Yes, here we go. The curtain wall. I recommend that the Board of Education approve $1,433,441 for the curtain wall at Northern High School. The total requested amount will come from the building site and sinking fund. The additional improvement was also identified by that 2019 Bond Steering Committee. The existing curtain wall was installed 25 years ago in 1997. The campus has transformed substantially over the past seven years. The new curtain wall will complement the newer facilities on the campus, including North Middle School as well as Portage Northern Auditorium. Again, we're looking for this as a project for this summer. And the bid tabs are there. On your overhead or in your slide, you'll see a picture of the... Existing snapshot of Portage Northern. That's just one image. And the next image is the proposed concept of how the new curtain wall would blend in with the campus. So there's a lot of red, as you can see on the previous image. So all of that red would be replaced. And the new, similar to the newer school system coming up, that rain screening system would be installed around the entire exterior of the building where you see red. So again, the goal is to have, have it complement the facilities that are on the campus as well. And Dan and I would be happy to answer any questions.
The red really stands out.
Say that again?
The red really stands out.
It does.
And, and not in a good way.
And it probably stands out more with the newer facilities on the campus as well.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
There is no image for the irrigation system proposal. But I recommend that the Board of Education approve $115,631 for irrigation at Centennial Park on the campus as it sits between Central High and Central Middle School. Total purchase cost will come from the building site and sinking fund. After the construction of Central Middle School and Centennial Park, that area of grass has grown weeds. We've used the mobile irrigation system at the onset to establish the grass. Once the grass was established, the weeds continued to grow. It's not practical to have the mobilized sprinkler system on a frequent basis. We have since discontinued the use of that mobile system and rely exclusively on the rain. The irrigation system will help improve the, the grass and beautify the campus. Our goal is to complete this project spring of 2023. And we've enclosed the bid tab as well for your, for your convenience. But I believe we're familiar with Centennial Park, so I didn't bring an image of that. And irrigation systems are essentially sprinklers. But that design is already in place when we were working on the construction of Central, Central Middle School. And Dan and I would be happy to answer any questions for the board.
Oh, the area certainly, certainly will look a lot better with a sprinkler system in there.
It will, most certainly. And the fourth and final recommendation tonight. There it is. This is just a visual image as a sample. But I recommend the Board of Education approve $154,514 for divider curtains at the Dog House and Stable. The total requested amount will come from the 2019 Bond Fund Construction Fund, number one, unallocated contingency. This project as well was identified by the 2019 Bond Steering Committee as high priority. The Dog House and Stable are considered prototypes of each other. Both facilities have three basketball courts, which also convert into four volleyball courts. The divider system will serve as a partition between the three basketball courts. This will be helpful when we have multiple teams from different sports in this space at the same time. Furthermore, when community groups use the facility, they will have some measure of separation from other groups. Our goal is to complete this project over winter break. We've included the bid tab for your convenience as well. And Dan and I would be happy to answer any questions for you. These are just sample, these are not the actual. This is just to give you an idea of what a divider curtain system looks like, how it would roll up and how it would look when it's down.
And you said this is just a sample. Would this impact the walking area that the community has?
It would have no impact on walking at all. Essentially, these would be attached to the beams in the ceiling, and they would come down, and they can also be mobilized up.
Are they automatic?
So actually, as a part of this recommendation, not only would those systems be automatically, but currently, right now, we have 10 basketball hoops in there, and they are turnkey, so you literally have to turn one at a time and wait. This system, we included as an alternate the opportunity for the main six hoops that are on the three courts to be incorporated in that automated system. So this would save some time when we're converting between sports and moving those hoops up and down.
Does anybody have a question for Dan? He's been here since 6:30 and hasn't been able to say a thing.
I just want to compliment him. He's been here for an hour and 45 minutes.
Say something.
As you all know, yeah, Dan is from OAK. And just in case there was a construction question that I was unable to answer about any of this, we wanted Dan to be here to address any of those questions.
He didn't answer a question, but he was ready to.
He was ready to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We'll get back to you later.
Well, thank you very much. They're all worthy projects. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last discussion item is the MASB Delegate Assembly Handbook Resolution. You received a hard copy of this at our last meeting, and there was another version of it available online. It includes amended resolutions, new and substituted resolutions, and bylaw proposals for the MASB Annual Fall Conference. Is there any questions on any of these things? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. We are adjourned.